I've got my usual table down here in the various report.
Last night, last night, or Tuesday night, all of the staff table was.
We're short a table, you sit down here, so you sit back up to the window.
You may wind up beating last month's, well, last, yeah, last time. Time, nothing wrong with that.
Great.
I heard. All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order for the Finding and Zoning Commission for October 10th. Roll call, please.
Member Alfonso. Member Bransky.
Here.
Member Cap.
Present.
Uh, member O'Brien.
Here.
Member Johnson.
Here.
Member Castaneda. Chair Suzega.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, we have to prove our minutes from our last meeting. Anybody have anything they'd like to change?
I have a insert for the September 12th, 26th minutes. Um, the sentence.
We're, we already did those.
No.
It's too late.
The sentence is on here, doesn't include the salient points that we take our, our testimony under oath. And secondly, if anyone professes to follow up, uh, I'll read the sentence for you. It is noted that no one answering questions of the commissioners or of the public attending a meeting are identified. Since testimony is taken under oath, it is significant to identify those answering, particularly when those questions require the responsibility for follow-up for the next step, which is the preparation and presentation to the village board.
They state their name and address. They state their name and address.
No.
After this.
They didn't have a name on them, so we'll, we'll know.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Nobody else have anything? All right, I will then entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our September 26th meeting.
So, I'll second it.
O'Brien and Cap. Roll call, please.
Member Bransky.
Obstein.
Member Cap.
Yes.
Member O'Brien.
Yes.
Member Johnson.
Yes.
Member Castaneda.
Yes.
Chair Suzega.
Yes.
Good evening. Okay, next is public comments. Does anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to bring up that is not on the agenda? Okay. Are you here for case 2440? Okay, are you the petitioners? Are you the petitioners?
Yes.
Okay, you wanna come up to the podium, please? If you're both gonna speak, I'm gonna swear you're both in at the same time. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Tracy Lance, 109 Braymore Lane, Olympia Field.
And do you swear the testimony you're gonna give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth? Nothing but the truth, how have you got?
I do.
Okay. This is case number 2440, a special use permit for a salon spa at 18215 Dixie. Applicant is Tracy Lance, this was published in the Daily South Town, September 26th edition. And did we get any comments from anybody?
Uh, no public comments were received on this.
Okay. Okay, so you're proposing to put a salon in the former Care Cleaners at 18215 Dixie Highway, correct?
Correct.
All right, tell us in your own words what you would like to do there, please?
I would like to bring my current, more existing business located currently in Indiana into the Homewood area. So from Indiana to Homewood.
Okay, and what type of business is it?
This is a spa, so I offer skincare services, full body services, waxing, uh, body sculpting, and those types of services. Also wanted to expand to include more services like sauna and other spa therapies um, as part of the expansion plan.
Okay, when do you plan the expansion?
So, I'm currently in a hundred and fifty square feet space in Indiana. So moving to Homewood would be the expansion plan.
Okay. Okay, and it states that your, uh, business proposed, proposed to operate Tuesday through Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And your peak hours are usually three until eight?
Yes. But depending on the day, during the week, those would be the peak hours, but the weekend, like Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, peak hours would normally be about noon to 3:00 p.m.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna have the board ask any questions that they have. Would you like to start, Ms. Castaniga?
Sure, just a quick question for staff, and we are getting an updated tally of the number of salon spa land uses in the village. The last email I had was from April of '22, uh, where it was seven and a half percent of all businesses.
So, uh, in reviewing the special use permit, I took a look at just the raw count. Um, I don't have a percentage of the total businesses, but I can tell you that there are 13 active salons or spas, things that fall in that use category, um, within, um, I believe it's a half mile radius of the, uh, of the business.
That was proposed.
Yep.
That's all I have for right now, I might have additional later.
Okay, member Johnson?
Uh, I, 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 you stole one of the questions, but my, my, and, and maybe this is directed to, um, staff to, uh, parking. Talking thirteen, a need for thirteen spaces, two spaces for employee parking in the rear of the building. Uh, and so, is there, the other parking would come from public parking, presumably in front of the building. So my question is, where is it parked?
Sure, so I'll just briefly walk through the parking analysis we conducted for this case. So, um, the, this building primarily relies on a shared lot that exists in the rear of the, um, of the building, there are 23 spaces in that, um, lot. Again, that lot is shared by the three businesses, the Waken Bakery, the dental studio, and now the proposed business. Uh, the two spaces that are mentioned are spaces that were identified by the applicant as being spaces that are, um, they called it dedicated, it's, they're not named right now, but they are listed with the business when they're, you know, in a, say, the broker's listing or what have you. Um, so there are, there's a deficiency of, of 10 spaces between the three, um, businesses that you have sharing this lot. Um, in those 10 spaces, then, we are, um, looking at the code and saying that because they can use the on-street spaces to meet those requirements, those spaces have not been allocated for other businesses, looking back at other special use permits, other businesses that have applied, um, for operation in Homewood. Um, so those 10 spaces that are deficient for those three businesses would be located in the front of the building and parking generally along Dixie Highway.
Okay. And the parking in the rear of the building, that, that's not dedicated parking spaces?
It's shared.
Correct.
My, your name, your business's name wouldn't be on, say, your two spaces or your three spaces?
No.
No.
Right.
No.
So what's, but it's, it, I assume there's a sign that says it's employee parking, right?
So it's, again, the, the answer of two parking spaces dedicated to the, the, um, to that business, um, was stated by the applicant, um, it's included in the materials here. Um, the, um, uh, the 23 spaces, again, can be freely shared by all three businesses in that, um, in that lot.
Right, no, I'm just saying, what's to stop me as a customer from just parking in the, in the rear of the building?
Sure.
It's the obvious question, there's no signage that stops me.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Uh, and I guess the, the other sort of, uh, tied to what member Castaneda just mentioned, um, I, I think there was some reference to the fact that, uh, your spa was different from other spas, as she stated.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Have you, have you seen or visited the other spas, or do you know what they do?
Yes, so I'm not only seeing them, but I've also looked them up on the internet, all of the spas in Homewood. And they are hair salons and spas, or nail salons and spas, but they don't offer the types of services that I'm trying to bring into Homewood. So for example, they don't, uh, offer sauna therapy or, uh, any of the, I wanna do like a spa plus social wellness aspect to the business. So these current spas offer primarily hair services or nail services, but not necessarily spa services that includes skincare, or waxing, or full body treatments, or any mind-body wellness types of treatments.
Okay. That's all I have for you, now, thank you.
Well.
Okay.
Member O'Brien?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I have a question for Steph, she was all of us, or, actually, Steph, sorry to know.
Should we swear them in?
On page six, there's a chart there, little table or whatever you wanna call it. It identifies the three businesses that represent that building, that parking lot, et cetera.
Correct.
And next to the spaces required, there, it lists 10 spaces, 1,935 square feet. Is that the size of the store?
So for the square footages in that table, yes, so for, say, Waken Bakery, 1,900-ish square feet, um, Dental Specialist, um, 1,876 square feet, those are the sizes of those businesses right now.
Okay, the, this is the size of the stores, the individual stores.
Correct.
1,900, 1,876, and 2,500 for the applicant this evening.
Correct.
Okay, that totals 6,300 some. But on the lot size, on page 10, it's a thousand less. The lot size is only 5,359. Something's gotta give there to have clarity for the numbers.
Yeah. It's on the actual, uh, document from the seller's realtor.
So the, I can answer this, so the building itself is 2,500 square feet, the lot, the parcel includes a portion of the parking lot in the rear, which is covered by that access agreement or that lot, so a portion of that parking lot falls inside the parcel. The actual lot for this development is, uh, 5,359 square feet. That's just the parcel that it sits on.
And how? I, this is only this year's.
A lot is a lot, regardless of if you place three businesses on it or not, a lot is a certain dimension, an area.
Correct.
Length, time, width.
Correct.
Okay, and it's represented as 5359. And then the individual stores that represent those three businesses, those three structures, is a thousand more.
Right, so those businesses are in different parcels, this is three parcels that are side by side. Each one, each building takes up about half of its individual parcel. Um, and then the, each parcel has parking area in the rear of it, and there's a, an agreement that binds the parking area that crosses those property boundaries together to create a single lot, shared parking lot.
Are they all individual?
Uh, yes, correct.
So it's shared parking, but the lots are separate?
Okay, so it's not, yeah, it's not one.
It's not one lot, it's three lots.
Okay, okay. Um, there wasn't a list in our materials, you did a description of your, the services you intend on
Yes.
providing, but there wasn't a list in our materials of, uh, your current services. I take it that you are in business now in Indiana?
Yes.
Okay, is the name of your business and name, Jenna, the same as, uh, what is provided tonight?
No, so the name of the business in Indiana is Facially Skin Bar. It's gonna be changing, I'm rebranding, and it's gonna be changing to Peak. P-I-Q-U-E.
First word.
Yes. And you wanna, you wanna know where it comes from? Let me enlighten you, so in, in 20, like, last year, I completed, uh, climbing Mount Kilimanjaro. And as part of that climb, I decided to rebrand, uh, Facially Skin Bar and bring the elements into my skincare space. So bringing in the water and the, you know, in my treatments and in the decoration of the building, uh, is the inspiration behind the rebranding and the name change. So I was, you know, it was very, um, challenging, uh, during that climb, and so I came up with this idea while I was on the mountain to rebrand my business to pay homage to the Mount Kilimanjaro climb. So I'm changing it from Facially Skin Bar to Peak, because I reached a peak, and then this is self-care elevated, is the concept of the business that I'm trying to bring into home.
I understand, thank you.
Well.
Congratulations on your achievement.
Thanks.
Did, did you enter from the Kenyan side, Kilimanjaro?
From 10, from the Mount, Mount Kilimanjaro.
Right.
Side.
No, but, but you can, I've been to Kenya, so you can see Kilimanjaro.
We, I didn't go from the Kenyans, right, it was the, yeah.
Tanzania, right, okay, yeah.
And I climbed twice in a two-week period.
That's, that's impressive, very good.
Thank you.
I have another question, the, uh, word bar in the title of the business, uh, what does that refer to?
So Facially Skin Bar currently refers to just the skincare at a bar setting. So I currently, um, it's just a, it's just a, a cutesy name for the Facially Skin Bar business. But bar as it relates to Peak is because I also wanna incorporate, um, a non-alcoholic skincare refreshments in a smaller bar setting. So non-alcoholic, uh, mocktails that complement the skincare services and also complement tinctures that you could use for skincare, or, um, you know, just internally that makes your skin looks great, look great, as well as, you know, just giving you a nice refreshing drink as part of your skincare service.
In Homewood, not Indiana.
In Homewood, yes, not Indiana.
In our materials, it indicates on page seven, the applicant has proposed the distribution of alcohol. You mentioned non-alcohol.
Non-alcohol, this is non-alcohol, just mocktails and what we call spa, spa-tails.
Okay.
So non-alcohol.
Okay, I just wanna clarify that. I have no other questions at this point.
Okay, number Cap?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I noticed that in our packet, uh, you now write an access through an easement, um, to get to the parking area. You don't, your, your parking lot doesn't have a direct access by itself to, um, a Dixie Highway, so you have to go through the, what would be the breweries?
There's a back door, so it's shared, well, the brewery right there.
I understand, but you're, for, for whomever parks in the back, they have to drive on, you know, brewery's parking lot to get to the road.
And I think the brewery parking lot is across from
Right.
uh, the, the Care Cleaners
Right.
parking space.
See that.
So you do have to drive in there as if you're going to Homewood Brewery.
Right.
Yes.
So, um, this is, this is a question, possibly a comment directed to our staff, um, in our, um, recent, the recent presentation, it already goes back to the summertime, about the, um, transit-oriented central business plan. The brewery's parking lot was designated as whatever, whatever the fancy word that they described as a district, parking district, wasn't that true? Remember that?
Yeah, I remember what you're talking about, this is, this is, yeah. Hair and hair, sure.
Um, but the easement that you have does not, you have the right of easement for access to get to Dixie Highway, but you don't have the right of easement for parking in the brewery lot, do you?
No.
Um, seems like 10, 10 spaces is, uh, quite the burden to put on, um, a public street. Um, and I'm not saying that, um, it's impossible, but, um, during peak, peak activities, um, peak use, it might make the walk and the hunt for parking and the walk from any parts of the town a little bit more, um, difficult, let's say. We have talked in the past about pedestrians crossing Dixie Highway willingly, that's a technical term, uh, not at, uh, not at, uh, crosswalks, could be, um, answered. Nice that we could use the, you could use the brewery parking, cause your, your peaks likely wouldn't coincide with theirs. Have you, um, talked at all with the owners of the brewery for something like this?
No.
No. I don't think I have any more questions or comments at this moment.
Okay, member Bransky?
Um, I, I, congratulations again on your, your clients.
Thank you.
Impressive, um, so just from the materials, looks like you're trying to bring something that's a little more, um, high-end. Um, so direct competition with the current spa businesses doesn't look, as, as you explained, is, it's gonna be something that's a, a little bit above, um, and not quite the same, so I'm, I'm agreeing with your viewpoint on that, I really don't have any technical questions, I mean, everything in the materials is pretty straightforward, so. Yeah, well, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Thank you.
Nothing else? All right, I've got a couple of questions for you. How many employees do you plan on having?
I plan on having four employees full-time. And then I also plan on having contractor employees come in, like yoga instructors, or, um, I wanna offer classes, like yoga classes, uh, or med- meditation-type classes, so those, I guess owners of those businesses won't be considered employees, but they would be coming in to present their services, like artisans, to present their products and things like that. So only maybe four to six employees that will be designated employees of Peak.
And how many would be on duty at one time?
So four would be definitely on duty at all times.
So where are those four employees gonna park?
So they would use the shared parking spaces that we are currently proposing.
The ones in the back of the building?
Yes.
How will customers know that there's parking back there for your clients?
So that'll be communicated the same way we communicate anything else that's going on with the business. This is where you, you're, you're to park, uh, and that would be communicated through text messages, or just as I update the business now, with any emails or text communications, the clients will always know that that's where they are.
Will you have any signage put up indicating that parking is in the back for your clients?
Yes, if I'm approved, I have signage put up, I would prefer to have signs.
And where would, where would you put the signs?
So I would definitely put them in the, in the two spaces that's designated to that address, and then, um,
But how would people know that those spaces are back there? Are you gonna put up any signage along the street somewhere, indicating there's parking back there?
Yes. On the side of the building, on Mama and Me's Pizza, where that space used to be, would be the only place that I would be able to put up a sign to direct cu- clients to go in that direction. If, if that's approved to use that building for signage, that's where I, where I would have the sign.
Okay, so you haven't contacted them yet about
No.
any kind of signage?
No.
Okay. Um, So you would have four employees on duty at all times?
Yes.
You've got two designated parking places in the back for your employees. Will customers be able to enter through the back or not?
No.
So they'd have to walk around the whole front of the building?
Yes.
Okay. My concern is the lack of parking. And with the brewery opening next door, you're talking about your peak hours being pre-dated, I think it was?
During.
Which is about prime time for brewery hours. And their parking lot, I'm sure, is gonna be full. So your customers would have to park, find a place somewhere on the street to park?
Yes.
Have you ever been in that parking lot during the week, during the day? How much of that parking lot that is designated for your three buildings use that during the day?
It, it, it depends, the, the, when I was there, the one businesses, the one business, the, what is a bake-in?
Bake-in bakery.
That business wasn't there, so it's hard to say what the parking looks like, you know, currently with those businesses now there. And then without the brewery being open yet.
Okay, how long ago did you check on the parking in the back there?
So, so as part of this process, you know, uh, going back and forth with the realtors, we were going back and forth with the current owners on the parking, and their agreement that they have now with the other two business owners. So that's where the, the parking agreement came in. I didn't know that there was a parking agreement until we were going back and forth with the realtor on what the parking looks like for that business.
Okay. Okay, now, in our information that we were providing, uh, what is it? It states that the applicant has, has proposed the distribution of alcohol at the site during normal business hours. And you're saying that's not true?
Non-alcohol.
Okay. Cause you cannot serve alcohol without the approval of the liquor license.
Correct. Yes. Yeah. Correct, yes, yeah.
I don't have anything else right now. Anybody else have anything they'd like to bring up?
Well, I have a question from the material we received late this afternoon. From a Shandy Pivots, a real estate broker. And in that material, it indicated that the applicant is committed to supporting local artisans by hosting monthly events. Uh, how is that going to be scheduled and when would that occur, what times and so forth?
So that would, that would be, um, that would be one designated day out of the month. Uh, on our less busiest days. Or on a day where we are not open for business, but we have the artisans coming in to present their products. Uh, to, as an event, so you invite current clients. Or they invite whoever they want to come in and to, for their featured product, whatever.
Where would that occur in the building?
So we, there's gonna be a designated room, like a social space, a designated room in peak that we will. It would transition from a treatment room to a social space where we will do events or classes or workshops.
I'm following the hand drawn layout. Where would that occur?
So, can I show you?
The spaces are named, so.
This, this room, this ready space room here, that's wanna transition from. A treatment room, so what I have, the, the pocket door here, where it'll open up for more space, you know, on non-business days. So this, we plan to have this open to make this bigger. Part, so that this can accommodate. Yes, who will come in for what they want to do.
So three hundred square feet?
Yes, plus this area.
Plus the four hundred in the front?
Yes.
Total of seven hundred square feet?
Yes.
Okay. I have a question for staff, um. About the zoning for um. Gathering of people and meetings. How is that gonna apply to this? Was this originally discussed on?
This, this wouldn't be a primary use, so I don't think that it would, you know, it's, it's not a primary, you know, assembly space, this would be. Yeah, accessory, um, you know, any business can have, I guess, it's nothing, I don't even have a team that has like events and. I mean, last month, that's not really consistent, not every day, it's not a primary use.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else do anything?
Uh, uh, I'm trying to recollect, um, and I think it was number cap. Um, maybe a year or so ago, we were talking about the space down. How, how busy this particular area was, and I think you had made a comment that, uh. Uh, you, we had, you had seen the traffic down there and that, and the vacancy. Down in that, that area. And it was fairly vacant. There weren't that many cars down there during, throughout the week, uh, it was really a quiet part of town. Now it's become with the brewery, a little bit busier. But I think in that, in, in both respects, it's good. But I, I can't remember the name of the business that, uh, that was here for variance. For special use.
North side of that.
Yeah, what was that, what was that?
I don't remember.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot on the north side is rarely.
Rarely used.
Rarely used.
Yeah, yeah, that, that was right.
Mr. Commissioner, I have a question for staff.
Yes.
Good, so, yeah, we, we get to a, a motion. The point about the alcoholic beverages, so in the testimony, it's given that they'll be non-alcoholic, but it is in the materials. The findings of fact does not reference it. Um, and I'm presuming that. Item number six in the findings of fact, the proposed business meets all requirements in the home zoning ordinance and other applicable standards in the village code of ordinances. Would kinda take care of that, because obviously those ordinances would require appearance before the correct committee to get a license, so. My question is, in the um, approval language in the motion, we probably don't need to mention. The correction of that in the testimony against the materials, cause it's not enlisted in the findings of fact. Just to clarify, sorry, okay.
I, I've worked, now that you've talked about it, I've got one other comment. And the rec- proposed recommendation of item one is that, the way it's stated is that. Is that correct now?
That is cor- that is correct, so the, the restriction on the use that, or a condition on the use that would be applied here. Um, would be that employee parking shall only occur within off-street parking areas. Um, where parking is permitted for the proposed use, so that would be the shared parking lot, so. Um, that would correspond with um, the applicant's testimony that employee parking would happen in the rear.
Okay. I have nothing else.
But that would preclude any customer parking in the rear of the building, really?
Customers could still park in the back of the building, their, you know, spaces are available, this is just to say that. We recommend that employees not park on the street, that all employees have to park in that parking area, that parking lot. Off the street. So the customers can.
And the other space.
Yeah, my concern is how are potential customers gonna know that there's parking available back there?
No. It'll be up to the business owner to communicate that when most people make appointments. They're easily done.
Yep.
Yeah.
I have some more.
When, you know, as soon as that brewery opens. It would be hard for us to find a parking place back. Anywhere on that street.
Yeah.
It'll be a challenge for you for a while, for sure.
Yeah.
But that goes for Homewood, a- anywhere.
Yeah.
Try and find a parking space and it would not go, I dare you.
Did you have something else?
Yeah, this, um. Even though it's not a primary use. Um, the possible use of this as an event space raises some questions, and if you recall. Um, I forget the name of the exact business, but they had film production, um. Business in the fun zone east of, um, the Home Depot area, um, their.
On Brett's Drive.
Yeah, Brett's Drive, their primary business, of course, is a. Um, film production, um. Audio production, however, um. As we recall, I'm sure, uh, the bigger issue became his proposal to, um, do. And, um, have this space served as an event space for related to his production activity, so it's in some ways similar. Or at least analogous to what you're proposing, but my, my point is, um. Uh, that actually was, was, uh, if everybody remembers about what was driving our. Concerns about the adequacy of, uh, parking in that, um, business park.
Right.
Um, and to be honest. Um. I'm not exactly sure, you, you, it looks like according to your. Your testimony and what we were describing, you would have seven hundred square feet available. Um, for event space, so not, I'm not exactly certain. Um. How that translates into the number of people who might be accommodated, I'm sure the building codes, uh, describe. Um. Something like this in terms of so many square feet, uh, per people, per person, rather than, um. And again, I just, I just don't have a, a, a good handle and I can't remember. Uh, exactly what, um, they discussed at that time, but. Let's just say it's. Six square feet per person. That would mean that, uh, as I do my math correctly. Conceivably that your event space could accommodate. Six hundred people, is, or I mean, a hundred people, is, is my math correct? And. Accommodating a hundred people is, um. Considerably, even though it's not your primary use, I get it, I understand it, but it, it, um. Um, it works, um, I, I mean, it's an entirely different sense of scale compared to. Uh, um, a spa business providing the services that you envision. Um, with the number of employees that you also, um, hope to. Um, employ for this, um, in a likely number of, of people. At any one time in, in your space, I mean, I counted what, six treatment rooms? So that would mean possibly, uh, you would, it, it, uh. If you're, if you're, uh, fully occupied, you would. Under those, uh, very quick calculations, you would accommodate ten people, and again, that's what, we're in the ballpark here of, uh. Ten, thirteen spaces, ten additional spaces, blah, 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 if I remember what, um, um. Commissioner Johnson was referring to, we had a similar situation. Um, within the past year of an event space, and it was, again, it was kind of vague on how, how. How many people might be accommodated there at any one time, and my point in, uh. To summarize here, and. Even if it's not your primary use, hosting an event space could throw this whole calculation of parking out of whack, and it goes. I mean, it's just a totally different, um. Totally different calculation for the adequacy of parking either onsite or on the street.
So what I'm thinking, when I say event, this is, um, this is like a class or workshop. With yoga mats or, uh, you know, where people are sitting on the floor. Definitely not to accommodate one hundred people, so for an event, you would kinda need room to host a workshop. Or a class, uh, or even artisans coming in, so I'm, I'm not talking at all, uh, about. Exceeding ten to twelve to even fifteen people at one time for an event. So not like an event, like a big party or birthday party or anything like that, so when I say event. It's, it's wellness-based events, like you classes, yoga classes, or having pregnant mothers come in for a. Uh, you know, an exercise or chair yoga for the seniors or things like that, where you need ample space. For them to be able to move around, but not necessarily, you know, standing around in like a social setting. That type of thing, so one hundred people is completely not the idea at all.
I understand, but conceivably, you talked about having four full-time employees and then you look to. Engage contractors, and my point is that. Your employees working on your primary business could, um. Be working side by side simultaneously with your independent contractors, so your. The, the people in this building might not be a, a simple. calculation of the number of treatment rooms you have and the number of saunas, uh, you have to factor that in, so we're. My point is, we're conceivably looking at ten people, I mean, your employees and your potential clientele. For your regular business and then in this, uh, these other, uh, more open spaces, if you have a yoga class, what is a yoga class? Five, seven, ten, nevertheless, um, that. Those uses are occurring simultaneously and they add to the parking load, the parking. That's, that's the only point on, maybe, and if, if we've already established that, um. This, this proposal relies quite a bit on the availability of parking along Dixie Highway, and I'm not quite sure that that's, that's always available, that's all.
Well, she'll have to take that in consideration, I mean, that, that's no different if you. If the bakery decides it's gonna have a, uh, an event right next door and wants to invite the public. They come, they come, they don't come, they don't come.
That's a dispensary.
Let's speculate.
Yeah, no, that's a dispensary.
No, but what I'm saying is, I can have a special event at my bakery, so. I mean, any business around that corner could have an event, so.
Well, but, you know, if you're gonna examine it in that light. It, it potentially creates an even, uh, greater problem, be- because we're talking about peaks. So where are the likely peak hours of the brewery? What are the likely peak hours of your business, what are the likely, you know, you call it an event, okay, maybe that's, um, a little. It takes us into a different way, but if, if you're looking to have your space fully occupied with a yoga class or a workshop or whatever. All I'm saying is, is that this adds simultaneously to. Peak uses for parking, that I'm just wondering out loud whether or not. Um, that level of parking can be accommodated on Dixie Highway, that's, that's all. That, that's my only point. And it's certainly wonderful if, if all of these peaks occur simultaneously, um. God bless us all, uh, we'd all be prosperous, might as well throw in, you know, across the street is the, uh, funeral home, so, you know, what would happen if? If, um, um, they would have an event, meaning a, a later viewing, well, no, seriously, if.
Well, yeah.
Many of us here, uh, remember that the overflow parking floor of the funeral home was at. Um, what used to be the, um, uh, the restaurant across the way, which is now the brewery. And, and, um, that potential for overflow parking has sort of, yeah, eliminated, and again, it just. Um, parking's a pres- precious resource, whether it's privately, um, uh, provided or publicly on the street, and if it's. Um, on the street, um, especially with the traffic volumes on Dixie Highway at certain times of the day. Um, it, it, it just might. Create some unsafe conditions, that's, that's.
And Mr. Ryan's quite concerned about. That, it's parking, what's gonna happen when the brewery opens?
That's the reason I asked the question with regards to DVD.
Uh, well, I understand, I mean, uh, you know, yoga class, um, you know, that was probably the ten square feet per person, so, you know, there's a limitation on what could be accommodated there, I get it, but. Um, workshops, um, training sessions, blah, 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 you know, what, what's appropriate? For trying to get a handle on how many people could be conceivably in that. In, in this, um, space at one time, and it really, you know, I'm sure the building. Space could accommodate it, but the, the real issue becomes where are the people? That's all, that's all I'm saying. No further comments or questions? Anybody else?
Well, there's always the other dimension with regards to signage and, uh. You have an, an obvious entry, and I would have to drive by that and find out if there's a, an entry sign for the brewery.
No, there's not.
On the driveways, there isn't, and, and then the driveway to the north of the brewery. Um, I don't believe has a do not enter sign for someone coming off unfamiliar with the area to go into the parking lot. Next to Mama and Me Pizza. And it throws me back to the previously mentioned, uh, case of Brett's Drive. Uh, I'm the only one that voted against that. Because of the traffic, one of four reasons that I voted against it. And originally he had eighty, I'll, I'll go through this very quickly, you've had eighty, uh. And originally he had eighty, uh, I'll go through this very quickly, you've had eighty, uh, individuals. Uh, seating for eighty, that's eighty cars, okay, he cut it in half to forty, he's got sixteen for a large crew. Okay, that's fifty-six, there's people from other buildings, let's call it, round it off at sixty vehicles. Sixty vehicles at twenty-two feet of length. It's thirteen hundred and twenty, that's a quarter of a mile. It's less than a quarter of a mile from Ridge Road to that site. So therefore, if they left after an event and they're pumped up seeing their people. Their group, whatever it happens to be, and then they get in line and they have to go inch by inch by inch. Until everybody turns off a bridge and like a railroad crossing or construction, they're gonna, you're gonna have people turn around. And they're gonna go into the mall. Okay, when you enter into the mall, what I mentioned that evening, is there are no stops. There is a straight shot down an access road going to Halsted, only with a right-hand turn going north. But there are no, at any one of those intersections, there are no stop signs. So the concern I have, uh, in any of these situations. Is the traffic and the control of the traffic, at the very least by some signage. And in this particular case, uh, whether we approve this or not tonight, there has to be a look at the signage. For the brewery before it opens up, and whether something should be put in, uh, put up with regards to. Uh, more, uh, capably identify the ingress and egress into that lot. Cause when you have a lot of, there are gonna be people that are coming, this is gonna be a destination town because of the casino and the brewery. So you're gonna have more people coming in here that are unfamiliar with the area. And they're just gonna go down Dixie and just pull right in, or think they're gonna pull right in, and that could be a problem, it's a safety hazard. That's just my comment, well, most my concern.
Well, that, that's, that would be a concern with all those businesses in that area, right?
Exactly.
So, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
The brewery's gonna make that stretch of Dixie busy, and that's actually a good thing, that'll. That'll serve as an anchor of sorts with, for other smaller businesses opening, and, you know, what, no matter what business opens in. Base parking is going to be an issue, doesn't matter what businesses it is, there's, parking's gonna be an issue. What I'm a little bit more concerned about is thirteen personal care salon and spa businesses within a half a mile is a lot. Even if this particular spa services doesn't completely overlap. With, uh, the services that are provided by other business, and, you know, we've gone through a long process to update our zoning code and our new TOD plan. And that plan and the upcoming updates to our master plan that we're doing, you know, it's all in, in part. Designed to bring a diverse array of businesses to Homewood. And particularly to the downtown where we're able to generate foot traffic and things like that, and so. That's the main concern I have is with, uh, you know, further homogenizing the diversity of businesses that are within walking distance. And the prime, uh, economic. Driver that sort of sets Homewood apart from other nearby towns, which is our downtown. That's all.
First point, do you know anything else? No good deed goes unpunished, you're trying to do something once a month to help. Is anybody ready to propose a motion?
Sure. Commissioner, I, um, Chairman, uh, I'd like to recommend approval of case twenty-four dash forty. To grant a special use permit for a salon spa establishment in the B two's downtown transition zoning district. For peak by facially skin bar at one eighty-two fifteen Dixie Highway, subject to the following conditions. Uh, number one of one employee parking shall occur only within off-street parking areas where parking is permitted for the proposed use. And incorporate the findings of fact into the record.
Thank you.
We have a second.
Our second.
Roll call.
Member Bransky?
Yes.
Member Cap?
No.
Member O'Brien?
No.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Castaneda?
No.
Chair Sirzaga?
No. I'm sorry you, uh, did not get approved.
Thank you, thank you.
We thank you for your. Thinking of us in your effort.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else coming up?
Next, uh, next meeting will be a train, an annual. An annual training session, I'll be in touch since twenty nineteen. But the, um, American Planning Association and Illinois chapter. What they do train, work, and just kind of a refresh and updates on. With any legal issues, uh, anything that's, that's maybe changed in the last eight years. That will be our entire next meeting, and it'll be a workshop style, so we'll be able to. To discuss issues and ask questions, and we'll please set up everybody up.
On what day is that?
That is the same as our regular scheduled meetings, the Thursday at seven, the twenty-fourth.
Is Chris going to attend?
No.
Well, I, I, to answer any new questions, right, so, but that's fine, okay.
And for sure, the, uh, casino's opening on November eleventh?
Yeah, and you will all soon get an invitation to a. Function, I don't know what it's called, at the casino on November, it's got like from four to eight. It's, um, you get, you're getting an invitation and a plus one, and we have a pre-opening party.
Twenty bucks of free chips. Twenty bucks of free chips.
Doritos or?
Oh, oh, yeah, Doritos, yes.
My doing good too.
So you, so look for that invitation, it'll come in contact number, uh, the invitations are divided by. Certain village hall staff are sending them out, hopefully, tomorrow.
That's gonna be November seventh, did you say?
November seventh from four to eight, but you'll get your invitation and if it's more.
And it's just for.
It's for about six hundred people. Both, both mayors of both towns got to, got to, uh. Form a list of people to invite.
Sure you have enough parking space there?
There of all places, I think they can, I think they can deal with.
Yeah, right.
That'll be exciting.
That place is busy.
And Homewood Brewing is opening next Friday.
What's opening next Friday?
Homewood Brewing.
Oh, they are.
And Always is opening next Wednesday, so.
Mm-hmm, the sixteen. It's great job, good development. Thank you for all the work you.
Thank you.
You've done with that, Angela and Mo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a big effort.
All right, if nothing else, uh, I'm gonna pay a motion to adjourn.
Our second.
Take your pick, darling.
Well, Brian and Cap.
All right.
All right.
All right.
All those, say aye.
Thank you all.
Now that we're closed, I have one question. Are we coming to a point where we're not going to consider or consider in a different way salons downtown? I mean, we, we, we have to.
But we've, you know, we've had that question before.
It's never been answered, I, in other words, I'm trying to develop.
But you can't.
Some sort of a plan going forward.
But you can't, you can't discriminate.
Yeah.